All right, it looks like we're back up.
All right, good. All right, let's see. Yeah, but the screen's not coming up. I'm hitting laptop and it's not pushing it up. Do I have to hit Control? Do I hit that and that, or just that?
No, just Laptop.
Well, that's what I've been doing. No, it's not that one. I know it's that. I thought we had it too. I probably messed something up.
No, you did not.
Let me see if I can shut it all down and then pull it back up.
We don't have to have it up there. He said we had everything in front of us.
Okay. Are you okay with just us looking at it, George?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll turn it over to you. We don't, uh... We're up live, so we're ready for the presentation.
Good afternoon. Appreciate y'all having us. My name is George Harmon. I've got Klein Klotz with me. We're with the Niche Group. Niche Group is one of the oldest independents in the state of Texas. We've been around for about 60 years. It's family-owned. Klein and I work out of the Waco office. Our home office is in Ginnings. Operations in about seven or eight different locations around the state of Texas. I've been in the benefits business for going on 30 years, actually. It's hard to believe. It's been that long. But most of that time, I've spent in the self-funded space. So, looking for clients that are potential candidates to save a tremendous amount of money by getting out of the fully insured platform, which is what you currently have. A fully insured platform is a pay-as-you-go, pay-for-benefits, pay-for-claims-as-you-go, but as everyone understands, you're paying that money upfront. So, self-funded, which we'll get into a little bit later. And the reason I got into the business is it's a little bit of a niche. It gave me an opportunity to do something a little different, but I just found it to be incredibly useful for larger groups, because it gives you a lot more creativity. It gives you a lot more flexibility to contour a plan the way that you want to contour the plan. It gives you more opportunities with benefit design, plan design, exceptions, because we design our plan document. The plan document becomes us. We become the decision-maker, so we're not at the mercy of somebody else's plan document. So, we'll go over kind of the advantages of partially self-funded, and we'll talk about some of the advantages of fully insured, too, because the fully insured model is not a broken model. It just becomes a time when we believe that statistically, it's time to take the step up and become partially self-funded. Klein has been with me for three years, going on three years now. Klein graduated from Baylor University like I did, played golf, knew Klein when he was a high school golfer. Kids, my son played some golf with him and his brother. Klein went to graduate school at Baylor and came to work for us, so he's starting off kind of the same way I did. He's starting off in the benefits-only space, so it's important for y'all to understand, this is what we do. If you ask me a question about work comp, or I don't even handle my home and auto at my house, my wife does, I don't even understand how that works. This is what I do. I mean, I'm a benefits guy, and this is what I look for. I think this is the most interesting aspect of all the facets of insurance, and I think it also gives you the most opportunity. I think it's the scariest. I've seen your budget. I know what you guys spend on an annual basis. It's a lot. It's a big, big spend. I think we can, we've got some alternatives and some solutions, maybe to take a bite out of some of that and put some money back into your pockets. So, if you look at the first slide, let's, let's talk for just a second about the conceptual differences between partially self-funded. Now, when I say partially self-funded, it's real important for everybody to understand. We're still buying insurance. We're buying insurance at a level, at an excess level, but we're going to take on a little more of the risk even upfront. In return for that, we're going to pay a lot less every month. So, the fixed costs right now going in are somewhere around $1,100 PEBM, per employee per month, correct? That's about our employee-only rate. When we go into a self-funded plan, our fixed costs are going to go down to about $250 PEBM. So, the difference is what we have to pay claims. And actuarially, we're going to bank on the fact that we're going to have more money left over to pay claims than, than we're going to have in claims. And that is a science. It is not an exact number, but we feel like actuarially that we can get within 1% to 2% accuracy based off the demographics of your group, what we know you're paying for healthcare, age, sex factor of your group, and the current conditions going on here. So, the predictions now are so good. We can get so close to what we expect your claims to be, but then with a margin of error, a 25% risk corridor, which we take into place, we know what your maximum would be. So, we're still protected. We're still going in on a partially self-funded plan every single year, knowing what our minimum exposure will be. We already know our minimum will be that fixed cost price, that $250. What does that get us? That gets us a network. It gets us a third-party administration firm. They adjudicate claims. It gets us compliance. It gets us service where we come into play, where the carrier comes into play. It gets us a drug plan. It gets us a network for pharmacies. It gets us a network for physicians and facilities. All those things go into the fixed cost. Other than that, what you see in the gray shaded area on the partially self-funded plan, that's claims. And that's what we don't know. Now, what anybody will tell you, they'd be lying if they didn't say that. We're going to have claims. We know we're going to have claims. You know, in our industry, I've heard it my whole life. You've probably have heard it too. Claims are claims. Well, I expect to have, I expect to have small ones and I expect to have big ones. But we can still predict how many claims we're going to have over a certain dollar amount, and that specific deductible amount is something that we'll talk about. We'll get more into the weeds as we go forward with this process. But let's say we pick a risk factor, and I'm just going to use around a number of $100,000. We're going to take on the first $100,000 of risk, okay? And that's for everybody. That's for every belly button in the group. And at the surface, that sounds like a tremendous number. Wow, we have a lot of those. You don't. I mean, we should have a lot of those. You won't. I mean, we could tell you that you're going to probably have less than four claims over $100,000 a year by those things I just told you about: age, sex factor, demographics, what we're paying for healthcare. You might have a year where you have five, but you're going to have a year where you have one, right? So, it's an average out, and we're looking at this on about a five-year cycle, okay? I like to go seven, but I can almost guarantee you, with 30 years of experience in the last seven, that over a seven-year period, you're going to have one outstanding year where you're going to have a huge surplus of funds. You're going to have one bad year where you go right to that max. That's normal. But for the most part, you're probably going to have five years that you're right there with what they predict, plus or minus 2% to 3%. We can live with that. Why do we like to self-fund? Because we get to hang on to our resources. We get to hang on to our money. When we write that check right now for a fully insured plan, it's gone. You ran a 68% loss ratio last month, okay? For every dollar, they paid out 68 cents in claims, okay? Admin, code, they may or may not be blended in that. There's no way to really know. But let's say it is 68 cents. Well, we've got 32 cents that, that we didn't spend, that we paid in fully insured premiums. It's gone. It's 32 cents for every dollar. It's gone, right? Maybe next month, maybe we'll have 120% loss ratio, and maybe we came out a little ahead, but we're going to bank on the fact that we're going to come out ahead more than we're going to be behind. And we get to put that 32 cents away. Well, you take that 32 cents for every dollar, $1,080, $1,100 PEBM, and you extrapolate that out to 350 employees, and you extrapolate that out again over 12 months, and then let's extrapolate that out over 60 months. It's a huge sum of money, and that's what we're banking on. We're taking the long play that over time, we're going to beat that expected number, and we're going to put more of that money away as a surplus. It's the county's money to be spent, most likely, on healthcare down the road, to offset some costs down the road. So, go back to that slide, and on this excess insurance... Y'all give me to say this thing just keeps timing out. So, all that gray area, all that claims that you see right there, okay? Remember, the fixed cost is a fraction. It's less than 25% of what we're paying for the full insurance, okay? All those claims that are sitting there that we don't know about, we're going to pay. We're going to pay up to our specific deductible amount. And going back to my example of $100,000, we're going to pay the first $100,000 on every belly button. Once we get over that mark, the insurance company sticks in. Now, the particular proposal that we're bringing in is Tokyo Marine. It's an A++ rated carrier. They've been in the reinsurance business for over 50 years. They're taking on the risk, okay? But we're going to pay for everything up to that point, and I want to make that as perfectly clear as I can make it, because there's, there's nothing hidden about this. This is usually where people get really nervous. Now, there's a reason that 85% of all companies in the United States, 85% of all employer groups in the United States with more than 200 employees are partially self-funded. Y'all are the exception, being on a fully insured platform. Talk about some advantages. Why would you be on a fully insured platform at that size? Maybe you have some risk. Maybe you have some chronics. Maybe you have some ongoing medical conditions. Maybe it's not worth taking the risk for the high. Maybe your age, sex factor's high. Right now, like I said, you've got a 68% loss ratio. Your loss ratio's been trending down for the last 10 to 12 months, okay? It's really been trending down for like the last 21 months. But you guys have an age-sex factor that's about average. Certainly in the county business and the governmental business, it's about average, and we've got lots of test pools. We've got lots of other counties that we can look at around the country that we can look at and we can say, where do you guys fit in? You're, you're about average. So, there comes a time when, and the toughest decision to make is when you jump off the fully insured platform, because the first year, the numbers aren't going to look the best. The risk factor for the underwriters, this is the most risky year, so you're going to get their best pitch. You're going to get the underwriters' most conservative offer, right? Meaning, rates are going to be a little higher, but it's still under. We're still, you know, somewhere, and again, we're getting into the weeds, we're still going to be somewhere in the, in the, in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $100,000 less than where you are in total spend. That's not the number I want to hear now, but I can tell you, over time, once we start getting our own credit with data, it's going to start compounding, because what we're seeing in the difference between a fully insured plan and a self-funded plan is about 19%. It's about 18 to 19. There's no argument to that. That's the number. It's, 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 it's the pooling of your administration resources. It's the buying direct from the insurance companies. It's buying a high layer of risk instead of first-dollar risk like you have right now, okay? So, self-funding is not scary. It's not something that nobody else is doing. You guys are probably in the, you're not probably, you are in the minority for your size to be on the platform that you're on. Companies have been doing this for 35, 40 years. Now, it's even getting, where companies are starting to go direct contracting, they're starting to go to facilities, and they're cutting deals. We're cutting deals with folks at 125% to 145% of Medicare all over the state of Texas right now. We're probably paying right now, you guys are probably paying somewhere around $262 annually in Medicare. That's about what Blue Cross Blue Shield stated reimbursement rates are right now. So, if we can find a way to get lower, and this doesn't just serve, this is not punching Blue Cross in the mouth. It's, it's any fully insured carrier. It's Aetna, it's Cigna, it's the local carriers like Scott and White, right? They're all in the same boat. Self-funding gives you the ability to hold on to your cash. It gives you the ability to keep your cash in your pocket, in the county's pocket, until it actually becomes a claim, and, and we like that. We like to have those resources. If we can, if we can push 18 to 19% over a three-to-five-year period, we've built up enough reserves, we're not really worried about that bad year. We've got plenty of cash. We've got plenty of reserves built up, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect and pad the plan, okay? So, we talked a little bit on the second slide, or I guess on yours, maybe it's page three. We talked about how does this look? What does a partially self-funded plan look like? And we have three main components. We have the third-party administrator. You're getting that right now with your fully insured product. They're just claims adjudicators. When you go to the, the doctor, you hand them an ID card. The ID card, it's got a reference number on it. It's not just the Blue Cross and the Shield. It's not just the UHC, which is United. It's not the Aetna logo necessarily. I can promise you, when they take that card, they don't care. They're calling the 800 number, and they're just verifying benefits with the third-party administrator. So, the third-party administrator, just think of them, just like you would your own administration office is here. It's everything that goes on behind the scenes. It's the heavy lifting behind the scenes. It's all the, it's all the, the, you know, the paperwork. It's all of the claims accumulation, and it's, and it's the processing, really, of claims. The second big component that you have is your PBM, your pharmacy benefit manager. This is huge. So, this is where I think the biggest potential savings are for the county. I think it's the biggest potential savings for any employer group, regardless of your size. If we can buy drugs wholesale, and we can skip the middleman and have a transparent relationship with our pharmacy provider, then we're going to save money. We are going to save 23% and 24% of your drug spend. So, this particular plan is using a... It's using a middleman called RX Benefits. We'll just call it, we'll call them aggregators, but they're just a middleman, and they're consultants' consultants, so, you know, I label myself as consultant because I charge a fee, all right? I don't take a commission, and there's no hidden, I don't get a dollar here and a dollar there, and $2 and everything like that. We just charge an upfront fee. That's pretty much what, what you're getting with your drug plan that we're offering. So, we take this aggregator. The aggregator works with the largest pharmacy providers in the world, you know? We're looking at Caremark, you know, we're looking at, everybody knows Express Scripts, right? And I think everybody probably saw four or five years ago when Express Scripts sold for $86 billion. I mean, you know, I can remember exactly where I was when I saw that on CNN. $86 billion.
What are you doing watching CNN?
I was Buffalo New York, I promise you. And when I heard that, I felt, fell out, I really did about fall out of bed. I'm like, who thinks, who, who was it that told somebody, hey, we pay $86 billion, we're going to kill them? I mean, we're going to make so much money. I mean, you know, I mean, where's your return on that? And then it just gets you to kind of thinking about, and that was five, six years ago, and that was right when aggregators first started working. So, these aggregators came in, and let me tell you where the aggregators came from. They came from Express Scripts. There were pods of employees that worked there that were like, well, my company's greedy. There's so much money. We can go out and offer the same services we're offering, and we can take a lot less and still make more. We can still make a lot of money. We can still make a living. And that's where they came from, and RX Benefits was one of those that spun off. There's dozens of them now. They're fabulous. So, rebates become yours, okay? So, is everybody familiar with rebates? Rebates, I mean, it's, it's like getting a dividend on your work comp, but you should be, you should be getting them, and fully insured carriers don't offer them very often, right? I mean, they just don't. Why? Because that goes in their pocket. So, we're going to give those back. In fact, we're going to go ahead, and they're going to go ahead, RX Benefits, and they're going to guarantee you that they can get you $41, $42 PEBM every single month in the form of rebates, but they're going to go ahead and give it to you in the form of credit. So, it's going to be a fixed cost credit to you every single month. You don't have to wait on the money to come in. It's called a transparent PBM. You're literally, it's like the commodities market. They're buying drugs six months to a year in advance at today's prices and bulk prices, and then we're giving them to your employees later. It's no different than the fuel man cards or any other thing that you do where you're buying your fuel way out in advance. We're doing the same thing with drugs. The other thing they do is they provide clinical support, so intensive clinical support. We work with our aggregators on a monthly basis on every one of our clients. We look at your data. We look at your data. Where are we spending the money? What type of drugs are there? Are they high-priced? Are they chronic drugs? Are they specialty drugs? Where are we spending our money? One specialty drug, I mean, there's some specialty drugs that are out on the market right now that are pre-embryonic drugs that are a million, million and a half to $2 million a year, right? I mean, are we ready to, are we ready to pay a claim like that? Do we want to pay a claim like that? Are there alternative drugs that we can use? Can we use drugs that aren't labeled specialty, that don't have the patent protections, but have the same chemical compounds? I mean, do we want to use those drugs? I do. They're a lot less expensive. They provide the same results for your members. Not trying to take benefits away, guys. That's not going to happen.
Question, may I?
Yeah, sure.
About drugs. I agree with you if they have one that can take its place, okay? And I had this happen to me. Basically, they had a generic, they did not have a generic, correct?
Yeah, sure.
So, they gave me a different medication, because they didn't have a generic for that, and that kind of screwed me up. If they don't have a generic, are you going to go to something else, or are you going to stay with what's?
Yeah, so, so what we provide, all our groups have the same. We implement what's called step therapy in every single one of our groups. So, step therapy, think about a step. We're taking steps. Can, does a generic work? Is there one available? The answer's no. Revert back to what was prescribed. If it does, we might go to the second level of drug. If that works, we might even try the third level. You might have a cost reduction each time you go up, but to your point, Commissioner, if drug isn't available and a doctor prescribed it, it'll revert back to the drug that was prescribed.
Not revert. You'll stay with it, not change.
This is not forced generic or forced formulary plan.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So, you see in, you see in the, in the triangle, the pharmacy benefits. So, we got our drug piece. We got our third-party administration piece. One thing that's really important to put out, to put out there and make sure you guys understand, we're offering the United Healthcare Network, okay? The United Healthcare Network is huge. It's the largest healthcare provider in the country. They've got a huge network, okay? We've got to think about this, though. There's always a risk when you switch anything. I mean, there's a risk when you go from chocolate vanilla to, to, to a chocolate ice cream to vanilla ice cream. There's, there's always a risk in everything you do, right? You make a change. It, it's, there's, it's never going to be easy. But it does make it a lot easier when we go from one massive network that's full of great providers to another massive network that's full of great providers. We're not squeezing it down. Now, what I'd like everybody to start thinking about is, is that, you know, your plan right now would best be described as, what, a PPO? A preferred provider organization? Well, there's really no such thing as a PPO. I mean, they've become all provider organizations, right? Everybody's on everybody's list. Everybody's in everybody's network. So, when PPOs first came out 22, 23, 24 years ago, man, they were awesome, because you really were getting a pretty good deal to go to this group, doctors over here, this group over here, or this particular hospital. And when they all said, well, we want to be on the network, we want to, guess what happened? It flattened the curve. Prices went back up, and everybody started charging the same. So, long-term, I would like Hunt County to be thinking about narrowing your network. We're not doing that now, but long-term, I think you should be thinking about that. I think it's the, it's the right way to offer healthcare, is let's get deals where we can get the best deal, and then let's drive as many people. Doesn't mean we can't have an option for them to go some, anywhere they want to go, but it is nice. I'm not talking HMO. I'm not talking that restrictive, but we might want to start looking at some, some other options and some other alternatives down the road, because when the, the narrower you can get the network, the, the more savings you're going to get, and we're going to control the quality of care while we're at it. So, we got the fixed cost. That's a known entity. We know every single month, we're going to write a check for about $250 per person per month. It's about $800 less than what you're spending now, but we don't, we're not going to spend that $800, because we're expecting some of that to go to claims, right? And we might be expecting 90% of it to go to claims, and that's fine. If, if 98% of it goes to claims, that's fine. 99.9, we're fine. Even if it goes over, we still have protection. We still have a known entity. You're not out on a plank. Nobody's going to come to you at the end of the year and go, hey, guys, you owe us $400,000. We'll be able to put our finger on what that exact worst-case scenario is, every single year, 12 months and a day before we sign a contract for a year, okay? So, it's not, there's no unknown risk out there. The unknown is, is how much money will we actually have left over at the end of every plan year? That's what's unknown, and that's, that's what your total spend is, right? So, we've got our fixed costs. We've got our risks, and we've got our spend. Again, to circle back around on any fully insured plan, you get a premium bill every single month. You write them a check. You put it in the mail. It's gone. Whether you have a claim that month or not, it's gone. That's just a fact. That's just the way that it's made up. That's the way the plan was designed. At the end of the year, you... You trust that you start off the year with a pretty, you know, better than you end it, because another fault of any fully insured plan is, is that you get your renewal, and it's based off of what they know, right? You get your renewal 90 days out, there's still a chunk of the year left, a third of your year, a fourth of your year. Well, you've already got your renewal sitting there, and we've got a 68% loss ratio last month. That's a good month. How did that impact us, and is that going to come back to us in the form of some type of rate renewal? That's a great trend. Well, on a fully insured, on a self-funded plan, the impact of a 10% increase, when you're trending in the right direction, is small, because again, it's, it's what your risk is. It's back to this, this gray shaded area of claims. If you have somebody who drops off that was a high claimant, or you have somebody who resolves a chronic ongoing, maybe an acute is a better way to say it, an acute, meaning injury, a one-time occurrence. Somebody has a kidney transplant, a donor's kidney or something like that. I mean, it goes, it's something that you know is a, is an expense. It's an expense today, but it's going to go away. I don't want my renewal based off of that expense. It could be $100,000, it could be $50,000, it could be whatever it is. I don't want my renewal affected by that. When you're partially self-funded, so much your renewal is claims. If the claims are gone, it's off our mind. I don't, I don't mind having a 5% renewal on my fixed cost at $250, because it's not going to impact my claims adversely. The advantages, we're retaining our surplus. It belongs to us. We have control. I talked about that. We can sit here all day and talk about how we have control. The things that we can do through our plan, inside of our plan. We can make the meaningful changes without sacrificing benefits, okay? What I like about a self-funded plan is your ability to move, you're nimble. You have the ability to make intricate changes all the time. It's not deductibles or co-insurances. You'll see on the next slide or two slides down, your benefits aren't going to change. Look, a deductible going up, and think about this globally with your health plan, a deductible going up every 500 bucks. So, you have a $300 deductible right now. If you raise that to 800, it's going to save you 2%. It's negligible. That's a huge impact to your employees, but it's a, it's a negligible impact to y'all. Benefits don't drive your health plan. Claims control drives your health plan. Benefits, very little to do with it. I can come in with the richest benefit. We can come in with a high deductible plan, a $2,500 deductible. That's kicking the can down the road, and I applaud y'all for not doing that, because you just make it harder on people to get access to healthcare when you raise the deductible. You make it more painful for them to go to the doctor. We want more people to go to the doctor. I consider and argue all day, well, I want to see deductibles and copays and everything go down. I want people to have access. The more times they get in front of the doctor, the more times that we solve a problem, that it never going to happen. And I tell everybody all the time, Lecinepril, that's a wonder drug, and there's a lot of drugs that are out there that get more headlines, but if we can get everybody to go to the doctor, and we can get 10 more people on a high blood pressure medicine that costs $4 a day, we might save a $300,000 heart attack, but we got to get them there. So, again, down the road, we're going to talk a little bit about that on the service side. We've got to be proactive with your plan. What are we doing right now to get your employees educated? What are we doing to get them to see the doctor? What are we doing? It's creative. We can't just sit back and, and pray that we have a good year and we don't get a double-digit increase, right? Let's take control of the plan. Let's do some things. Let's put, let's put a quasi-wellness program in. Let's put some type of... Let's put some type of force, well-woman, well-man in. Let's put some incentives in to get people to go to the doctor. We want people to, this is, this is a living, breathing organism, your health plan. You've got to think of it like that. Right? You've got to think about it. It's got to survive for the next day, the next year, and, and really for the next, you know, generation of employees that you have. But your spend is $5 million. We're going to look up in 10 years, if we stay on the current road that we're going on with healthcare, it's going to be 10 million. And are we sure that we're going to have an extra $5 million to support it? If the plan goes away, we're in big trouble. Right? All of us. And I've got 180 employees in my group. We, 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 we struggle with the same things y'all do. We struggle with it. But we have results. We have got proven results, plans that work, programs that work. And again, it's not programs that are expensive. It's, it's mostly just creativity and ingenuity, and it's just getting your employees educated. It's not, not terribly difficult. We talked about United Healthcare, largest network in the country. So we have over 1.2 million providers. I mean, there's just so many of them, it's not even, it's, it's, they're, they're in every network. That's not the problem. Doctors being in the network is not going to be a problem. The problem is, what are we going to spend when one of our employees goes to Cook, or goes to Herman, or goes to Indiana Anderson? What kind of return are we getting? Are we getting something at 400% of Medicare? Are we getting something closer at 130, 140? That's the issue. Right? It, it's what we spend on claims. So that's the goal. We can't solve this problem, I think it's real important, we can't solve this problem until we get onto a self-funded platform. We have to get there first. And it's a tough decision. And it may be scary. But we've got to make that first step. That's the first step. And then we can start to get control of the plan, then we can start developing a surplus, then we can start doing some really cool things internally to create a better benefit plan for your employees. But it's, it's not without some sacrifices. We've got to take on some risk. We have to. Financial risk, not really. It's about a break even. But again, this first year, it's the most painful year. This is the biggest risk that the administrator and the reinsurer has with y'all. Once they start to collect some data, we're going to get into a really, really consistent pattern with your rates. We're going to know where you stand. We talked a little bit about the NITI Group. Look, I tell people all the time, I'm just, I'm here. Klein's here. We have a service team. Klein's going to talk a little bit about the services and support. I think that's really important for the county right now. I think that, 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 that some of the things that we can offer to help your folks do their jobs more effectively and cleaner. But we have compliance, regulatory issues that are changing every single day. We have an ERISA attorney that works with us on retention, your, has access. Y'all have access to him all the time. Help with all of our compliance need, any legal issues that arise as a result of the health plan, we provide that. We have our team, Klein will talk about, and then UHR has their team as well. We'll talk about that.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Going over the vendors and your network, basically, do you have a copy of who's in network or in Hunt County?
Yeah, yeah, we can go to uhc.com, and you can type in Hunt or zip code. We couldn't bring a network book, I mean, it's 200,000 providers in the state of Texas, so, didn't know if we could submit that record. But yeah, if you'll go online, Commissioner, you can look up by, it's very simple. You can go on, you can look up by provider name, by zip code, you can look up by city. Just put in a keyword, it'll get you, you can look up by specialty, subspecialty, a physician. We mentioned the benefits stay the same. Let's go to the very last sheet. So, every self-funded plan- Actual warranties come out with fully insured equivalents. And, and that's the only way we have to bring an apples to apples comparison in your current plan. And that's your fixed cost plus your expected claims plus a risk core, an oops factor, just in case it goes over. So, if you'll look right here, we've got two options. So you see the NITI Group Option 1 and the NITI Group Option 2. The first one's $125,000, I'm sorry. Yes, the first one is $125,000 specific deductible. Now, when we ran actual aerial reporting, the predictive on claims that excess $125 was at 4.3. So, they're predicting that in a group your size will have 4.3 claims that go over $125,000. It's a pretty small number. If we go up to 150, that number goes all the way down to 2.9. So, 2.9 people less than three have a claim. That's fine. Remember, remember how much money we're putting aside, and remember that we've got a $5 million standard here. We're going to have a few claims that go over. We're going to have some high claims. It's going to happen. Now-
Are you saying number of people or the percentage of the group?
Number of people, totally. Belly buttons in your-
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, as I said before, the science is so good, the predictions are so good. It's shocking. My experience has, has been that over a five-year period, you'll have less than what the predictive. Because again, there's some conservative math being done there. Nobody wants to look bad on that side in our registry. They shouldn't. But if you look at it on a fully insured equivalency, it's the same. It's not much difference. This is my point from earlier. Oftentimes, when we go from a fully insured to a self-funded or a partially self-funded plan, it's that first year that it looks like, hey, we're going to, we might spend more. Well, it came out this year, you're not going to spend more, you might spend a little bit less. It's an opportune time. We ran another predictive that, we had a consulting firm called Stealth out of Phoenix, Arizona, that ran a predictive on the likelihood that your, and the judge has seen this, the likelihood that a partially self-funded plan would beat a fully insured plan. And when we say beat, it's beat them, beat the budget. It's financially better, a win. And Klein, if my memory serves, year one, it was right at 80%. Year five, it was 98%. I like those odds. If you tell me that we've got a 98% chance that five years from now, we're going to beat the fully insured at the very least, we've kept the cash until the cash needed to be spent. We're not giving it away before its day, before the claim was even incurred. And that's valuable. It's valuable to have that money in y'all's pocket. Now, I've got lots and lots of stories, I've got lots of clients that are partially self-funded, you know, I've got a lot of clients that are, I've got unions, I've got trusts, I've got private entities, we've got counties, cities, governmental entities, we've got quasi-governmental entities where they get federal, local, and state funding. And I can tell y'all with 100% certainty, I've never had anybody, ever, in my career, and this is me, almost 30 years, I've never had anybody go from a partially self-funded plan back to a fully insured plan. Right? I've had a, I've had a hard time getting some people to finally pull the trigger, but once we get them onto a partially self-funded, they never get back. You can't afford to go back. Because it's just cost more. It's just, it just is what it is. On a PPM basis, it's just going to be more. Most of my plans, almost all of my plans, have a surplus. Talked about this before, he allows me to share his numbers. Harrison County, out Marshall, Texas, county seat, wrote that group 11 years ago, they were broke, their health plan was broke, it was about $800,000 in the hole. We went to a partially self-funded plan 11 years later, and we're coming this year, $600,000 in our budget, and that's about, that's about where we are. We keep setting budget numbers very conservatively, based off the previous year and the previous year and the previous year, and we came back at a $600,000 surplus this year. So, what does that mean? It's just, people say, the county judge says, you saved the 600. So we didn't save anything, we just didn't spend it. Right? It just is what it is. That's the difference in mentality with a self-funded plan. We're not saving anything because that money that we write on a fully insured plan is gone. That is savings. If you can save me on a fully insured plan, $10 PPM, that's savings. On a self-funded plan, we're just not spending it. It's a better way to look at it. It's just money we didn't spend. Any questions about the differences between a partially self-funded and a-
Yeah, did, uh, make sure I understood or didn't understand. You made a statement that we'd never spend in the first year more than what we had budgeted for. Do we have reinsurance that guarantees us if our claims get higher that we're capped at a number?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So we're going to buy reinsurance, it's going to stop. So what happens? I mean, the, 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 one of the best questions I've ever gotten is when I pitched the proposal to a client and it was a private entity, and I said, you know, I used the $100,000 specific number, and they said, what happens if we have, they have 654 employees? I can remember that number because we just, we do the analytics every month. What happens if we have 654 employees that go 999,999? So we never get the benefit of the reinsurance. Well, we buy two layers of insurance. We buy one on a specific basis. So, one claim goes over $100,000, we're getting reimbursed. But then we buy for four, five bucks a month per member, we buy something called aggregate insurance, where they give us a number. So, let's say in your case, it's 5.5 million. If we ever get to 5.5 million, that's about what your spend is right now, we're done. We're done, aggregate. No, we might not even have a $100,000 claim, but if we just have a bunch of 50s and 60s and 70s, we need protection there, too. So that's the max that I'm talking about. We're buying insurance on two levels, on the individual and on the group as a whole, the aggregate. Specific, aggregate.
Thank you. I want to make sure, I, I thought that's what I understood. I want to make sure, and they, make sure they understood that-
Yeah, I think a lot of people think, and I've had a lot of people over the years say, well, you know what, we tried self-funded, it didn't work. Year one, you know, we were out. It just wasn't set up properly. It just wasn't set up, they were underfunded. I mean, you've got to be funded. When we talk about the delta between the 250 and fixed cost and that extra $800, we can't spend that money. That's claims money. We're accounting. That money is there to, we're going to have those claims. We might not have them the first month, we might not have them the second month, but eventually, we're going to have those claims. So we're still earmarking that money. We're just hoping that anything we can do over a 12-month period to beat it, it's ours. It's ours.
Now, if, if we were to switch or one-day switch over, as far as for an employee, would they be able to tell any difference? What's, what's that going to impact them?
No difference to them. Zero. Their ID card's going to say, I mean, Blue Cross has a self-funded plan, United has one. We've got tons of boutique, G third-party administrators that do awesome jobs. I mean, most of what Klein and I do, it and with these large networks. We brought in this large network because it'll be more comfortable to your employees to make a switch. That's the first thing that we have to be, you know, cognizant of. We're switching y'all to a platform, but we want their experience to be just as good. Right? I said earlier, Commissioner, I said, as we go down the road, I hope that you'll agree with Klein and I, that, hey, there's a lot, man, there is money to be saved. What else can we do? And that's typically the natural progression that most groups have. You start off fully insured, we go to self-funded, well, that was 19%, that's a lot of money. What more can we do? Let's go get a direct contract with Hunt County, for example. Why not? I think I can get a direct contractor from this year. United has agreed to allow us to do that. So if I can go to Hunt, and we can set up another level of benefits, where if they go to Hunt, we know that we're paying less than what we're paying to go to any other facility based off a percentage of Medicare. Medicare is at 1, we get a lot of direct contracts around the 150, 160. Networks are typically reimbursed in hospitals in the state of Texas. I mean, some would argue it's 390, 395% of Medicare. But I think most of them, with their discounts and current, your current plan with Blue Cross, is going to be somewhere in the 250 to 280 range. That's normal, that's not abusive, but that's high. United's going to be the same way. So, we got to get, we got to get off of that train, and we've got to narrow it down.
And you do local doctors, too, as well as the hospital?
Yeah, absolutely. Physicians are, professional networks are, they go along with the facility 99% of the time. Oftentimes, we'll go do them independent of each other. We've got direct contracts with ancillary providers all over the place, ambulatory centers, standalone ER, 24/7 clinics, imaging centers. I mean, I've got them with massage therapy and acupuncture centers, I mean, it just all depends. I mean, I've got firefighter groups that, you know, physical therapy is the most important thing to them, so we, we do. We go out and we find physical therapists, chiropractors, acupuncturists. I mean, there's a lot of creative things that you can do to fit the needs of your group, depending on what your group needs. Right?
Our, our group, and poor Sandy and her team, she has tried and tried, is to get to understand not going to emergency room just because you have a runny nose.
Right.
And that's, that's part of what our problem is as well. Is that something that you and your team helps out with? Is maybe some programs for employees to better understand how to use the insurance properly?
Absolutely. Yeah, education is going to be the primary concern the first year.
Because I, I know, I know we've had some issues trying to get answers from, from TAC on what to do, what not to do, and does this fall into this and this does not. So, you know, being able to have somebody to come out and help our employees understand everything is definitely a plus.
Yeah. So Klein, I think this is a good segue to talk a little bit about the, the support side and what we can offer to, to Sandy and her team. It speaks to exactly what the Commissioner's talking about. This is a big part of the presentation, in our opinion. We, we, you know, I was telling Klein, in the spirit of being 100% transparent on the way up here, you know, 30 years, I've always relied on the fact that I understand the financials, I understand the data, I understand the claims, and, and I don't really ever speak to the service side of it. Because I have my team, and I know how wonderful my team is, I know how responsive my team is, and I know my team's accountable to me and to our clients. But, in this particular case, we've really put together a really, really neat service package that's going to be inclusive, that's going to be available, and it's going to have some boots on the ground to get us up and going and get that education piece solved. Because that's a big part of the problem. Again, we can get one more person every single quarter to just go to the doctor, Commissioner, that's a potential three, four, $500,000 claim. Or, in your case, what you were speaking to directly, that's one less ER visit, or two less ER visits, or three less ER visits. Who are our habitual abusers of that? I mean, do we know who those people are? I mean, we should. I mean, because we're looking for those people. Who are our offenders? Do you have a member that's gone two, three, four, five times? And then, what's, what was the actual outcome? You know, we can look at it on a green, yellow, or red light simplistic basis, that was a green light three out of four times. They should never have gone to the ER. I told you, I think, one time before, I don't even like these standalone clinics. You walk into the standalone clinics now, I don't wanna go unless our members have a deal. Because now you walk in, emergent this side, non-emergent this side. Well, hold on a second. I passed the one out here on the highway, they got a helicopter pad. Please. They care for letting people in and out of that thing? Why do you think they have that helicopter pad?
Send them home to the hospital.
No. Nobody goes there when they're, when they think they're having a heart attack. People go there when they need stitches. They go there when their kids get out of school and they have runny nose and, you know, maybe have flu. They have that because, you know what, it checks another thing off the box. Look at us, we're in emergency room. They don't have, they don't have ER physicians necessarily that are trained there, but they've got the pad there. Right? But they'll charge you a different rate if you go to the left side versus if you go to the right side. We have to educate people on that. I fell off a treadmill a few years ago and, at lunch, massive, forty stitches in my, in my shin. And the tread, the treadmill actually caught me on the way down. I'd stepped on a treadmill that was running at seven miles an hour, you're all laughing at me. I didn't just fall off it. I wasn't wearing my glasses and I forgot to turn it off. It was dark, it was a workout class. And I went to one of the clinics and the lady met me in the, because I looked at, I mean, I am, I'm looking at my own benefit plan. And I'm like, well, this is a two hundred dollar copay, the ER is five hundred, I'm just gonna go to the little ASAP clinic. And the lady met me and she saw me get out and limping in, I had blood, I mean, it was all, you know, running all over the place. She met me and said, honey, you need to turn around and go to the mercy room. We can't treat you for that here. So, I go to the mercy room. Well, again, just to tell you how insurance works. I go to a network hospital. The mercy room's in the hospital and I get a balanced bill. The physician, the ER physician, who did nothing but make fun of me for two hours while she was sewing me up, she was awesome, but she just couldn't get over the fact that I fell off a treadmill at lunchtime. But she wasn't a network physician. Right? How much sense does that make? And that's the problem with healthcare today. I'm in the business. Did I think to ask her? I did mess with her a little bit and say, how much is this gonna cost? And do you know how much, you know, that drug you just put in my knee and how much the stitches cost? And she's laughing like, you know, I just get paid it. So, you are, I don't know how much it costs. I'm like, yeah, that's what I do for a living. We need to know how much it costs.
You made a statement when you started out this whole thing, in reference to a hundred thousand, the county's gonna guarantee a hundred thousand basically a year on each person.
Yeah, we're talking about that that was our specific deductible, yeah.
Yes.
Maximum spend.
Yeah. That was just an example.
As an example, was it true? You're saying that a hundred thousand then, you'd have to go over that. But everybody's not gonna spend a hundred thousand.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah. You would be on the hook for the first hundred thousand. Yeah, but, but the predictive says around four at a hundred, well, maybe around five at a hundred thousand. But we know what the predictive is gonna be. We know what to expect. It could go a couple more over, it could go a couple more under, but we know in the ballpark, we don't have a huge exposure there.
So, I think, Philip, if you're, if I'm hearing you right, if, if I go to the hospital or I go to multiple doctors and I pay, and I, I hit the max of a hundred thousand dollars, we no longer pay a claim on me. It goes to the other insurance company. Every claim after I spend, they spend a hundred thousand on me, it goes to another one. If we have an unusual year and ten people have a hundred thousand dollar claim and by year, by month eleven, we're already at our maximum budget, then another insurance company in and pays the rest of our claims for that year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you were asking, Philip?
That's where the, the coin, everybody's heard of stop-loss, right? And we hear it in all kinds of different things. That's, that's where it came from, stop the loss, right? So, we know that, that at a hundred thousand dollars, that's the stop the loss max. So, that's our exposure. We're offering, we're proposing for the county either a one twenty-five or one fifty. Your size warrants that. You're big enough. You guys are collecting enough money and you have the ability to budget enough, let's buy less insurance. Now, I'm probably gonna suggest, let's go with the one twenty-five number, take on, pay a little more in fixed cost, twenty-five dollars per person, per year, for a month or year. Yeah, and buy the exposure down a little bit. But the difference between one twenty-five and one fifty is twenty-five grand, it's pretty negligible. The, the more, guys, group your size. I mean, and again, everybody, it's specific to what's going on in the group, but we've got a lot of cases, your size, their spec is two fifty, three hundred, and we'll get to that point. But we wanna build up a reserve to where we can afford it, where we feel really comfortable having three or four of those claims that we can just write a check. And that's why we did all this heavy lifting now, to put the reserves away. And that's kinda my whole point, Commissioner, is that we gotta start somewhere. And we gotta start putting the money away. If at any time, we don't, we're not comfortable with the platform, we can go back. There's no penalty for going back. I don't think you will, but you can. You're not stuck here. You're not stuck.
Go to that page.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Basically, we have a third-party administrator.
Yes, sir.
Back. That would be y'all.
No. No, that would be United.
Okay, that's United.
Just like Blue Cross is doing it now.
Okay. Now, you said you had people working for United. Basically, my question is this right here. All of a sudden, United Healthcare sends a letter saying, basically, what your treatment is, is wrong, we're not doing that right here, therefore, you're having to have letters of necessities to do this or do that. You know what I'm talking about?
No, sir, I don't. You're talking about experimental?
No. It's basically because some are in, is trying to save them money and questioning whether you need that or not.
Has that happened to you?
Yeah.
On the current plan?
Now, that happens all the time in reference to different healthcare. Okay, what position are y'all gonna intervene in reference to that? In actuality, since y'all are taking care of our healthcare matters, because actually you are working here with us, but also healthcare, when they come at and come at us like that, do y'all have attorneys or whatever, or workers that intervene in that type of thing or not?
Well, we do. We, we have a, we, we have a service team, but our plan document that we're gonna design for the group is gonna be specific to your group, it's gonna outline what's covered and what's not. We don't have issues with nurses with, with.
Even Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
So, you're talking more about large, large, large claim management?
In, in actuality, all of them hired, it's just like North Star. Do you know what North Star is?
I do.
Good. Okay, North Star was hired by the state under MHMR. And basically, they have people out there because the more money that they can say, hey, you don't need this, then they're making that money. You're familiar with North Star? That's what's taking place. My question is, do y'all have somebody that intervenes when they send one of your clients, hey, we don't think you need this, we need to, we need to go up and basically address this to our, whether it be Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or their Health Select or whatever, they've hired these people to do this, believe it or not. You haven't ever heard of it done?
No, I mean, I have, Commissioner, but I think what you're, what you're referring to is, is something that's either medically unnecessary or something that's experimental.
Yes.
That, or something that's not covered in the plan document.
No, it's covered, but they take it upon themselves to hire someone to say it's not.
The provider?
Then you have to, then you have to.
The insurance company, I think he's referring to.
Oh.
It's, it's the insurance company. You don't have any control over that. They would be the ones.
Well, I'll, okay, Commissioner, I'll tell you this. I have a hundred percent control over that. I, I, the insurance company works for us, I have a relationship. The way that we build the platform out and the contract is, there's no relationship between me and the insurance company, so I wanna make that very clear. I'm independent of them. No contract you guys will have with anybody. On a side of it, we looked at your ancillary benefits, saved apples to apples, exactly the same benefits, we saved around fifty grand.
Yeah, for dental and the high care and whatever else we have.
Those contracts will be between the county and the carrier. I'm not gonna be, you're not gonna see my name on that contract. Just like in your particular scenario, I advocate for you. My team advocates for you. Insurance company works for y'all, I represent y'all.
Okay, so what are you gonna do if you?
So, if we get, if we get denied a claim, it's what he's, I think he's asking is, are, is your team gonna advocate for us if he feels like he needs the treatment and they're saying no?
Absolutely. And I mean, like I said earlier, I mean, we have an Arissa attorney that works directly for us that we've, that she works, she's on my team. All right, she's not an employee of ours, because I don't want you to have to pay for it all the time, only when you need it, but she's on retainer and that's something we pick up.
And you've never heard of that happening?
Commissioner, I've heard, I've heard of everything happening. There's so many moving parts in a health plan. You're talking about something very specific that I'm just not familiar with, but, but no, sir, I, I do not, I will know in advance if that's something that's covered or something that maybe needs to go here, go there for treatment, or something that is just not covered, that it's denied. But I wouldn't be surprised by, that wouldn't.
You've heard of letters of necessity.
Well, letters of necessity from third-party vendors? Yes.
I'd, I'd say from doctors.
So, we, we have, at your disposal, we have a third-party review company that the TPA work, that, that will, that the TPA pays their expense. If we ever have any type of disagreement that needs a resolution, their expense to hire a third-party, there's a list of them, just like arbitrators, there's a list of dozens of them. Randomly pick one that both parties agree on, they would be your third-party advocate. They will have an independent medical staff that will review a claim and make a determination if we ever got into a dispute over whether something was medically necessary or not. But I can say with all certainty, Commissioner, I just don't run across problems with claims being denied or being driven on a PPO plan like this. I could understand it if it was something more restrictive like an HMO or if there was something written in the plan design that limited services of some specific sort in some space or some scope or some channel. But I can certainly tell you this, as the judge said, we advocate for y'all. So, we would be there to defend y'all and to support y'all if we feel like the plan document supports it. It will be paid. Another thing about a self-funded plan you gotta remember, we're not gonna get in the business of doing this, but again, the creativity and the openness of a self-funded plan, it gives you the ability to cover what you want, cover what you don't. I mean, I've had, I've had self-funded plans that covered, you know, plastic surgery that was not medically necessary. I mean, if, if the employer wants to cover it, they can. Now, I'm not gonna recommend that for y'all, but if it was a problem for us, that's what he wanted.
I think a few of us need it.
But he, he had his reasons and he did it. And I mean, but you could never do that on a full insurance plan. Here, I could never get that done, nobody could. You wanna talk about the service?
Yeah, so, basically like George was saying, we have our own service team at the ITI Group, kind of what you were saying. So, if there was an issue, we would have our own internal staff working to resolve whatever is happening, whether that's assisting Sandy with HR, with compliance stuff, we have our own internal team. And then on top of that, you guys also have your third-party administrator, which is UMR, which is the company, you know, that's owned by United Healthcare. And so, they're the ones that are, you know, adjudicating the claims, working on compliance. You guys would have two different full-time contacts with UMR. One would be kind of like your account CEO, count executive, and the other would be your field account manager. They kinda have different roles. Your field account manager would kinda be the person that would service your employees and, you know, help with open enrollment and any kind of issues or questions that the Hunt County members would have. So, there, there's, you know, a wider variety of resources that would be available, not only to the employees, but to the, to the county itself, you know, whether that's administering the plan, open enrollment and stuff that HR would need help with. Is there any questions about the service component?
Commissioner?
Commissioner, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, and our team internally, it's, it's myself, it's George. We have some wonderful ladies at our office, Amy Simpson, who comes with, I mean, decades of experience, I won't disclose any more than that. She, we also have other ladies in our office that support her. You know, we're, we're always working behind the scenes, taking care of issues or things that pop up that you, you guys may not even be aware of. Always, you know, making sure that, you know, our vendors are on their best behavior, that everything is going squarely, just keeping an eye on, eye on things. We like to view ourselves as air traffic control for the plan, to make sure everything's running smoothly, that you guys are not having any issues and that you guys are getting the most for every dollar you spend.
Sure.
I'm talking about a little bit about the concept of enrollment and what we can do, taking everything from paper to the front.
Yeah, so, as I understand it, you guys do a lot of paper enrollments, a lot, use a lot of paper. There's all kinds of services and options that we can use through UMR to maybe go take a paper, paperless route. They have a wide variety of resources available to you guys to help in that open enrollment process, whether that's, you know, education that we were talking about earlier, whether that is getting everything streamlined on an online system. There, there's small P EPM, per employee, per month fees that we can pay. We're talking like, you know, two, three, four dollars a month for different levels of additional resources that can help make, you know, your employees' lives easier, your staff's lives easier, as far as, you know, kinda streamlining the enrollment process, if that makes sense to everybody.
So, on, on open enrollment right now, again, Sandy and her team has to do everything and get everything lined up. You guys would actually be involved in the open enrollment?
Uh, we have been involved in open enrollment.
Yeah, I'm gonna answer that real quickly. We just went through this at Angelina County. The way that we would roll out, they're roughly the same size as y'all. We'd have somebody from every vendor that y'all contracted with that would be at the enrollment meeting. We would have our team, the ITI Group would be on hand, and we have UHC, UMRs, two, because we've got a senior account manager and, as you said, a CEO. One of those two would be on hand too. So.
Is that, is that just the first year or is that from there on after?
It's something we do every year. Booklets will be provided by us. So, we do real nice benefit booklets, go out and those would be customized each, each and every year. We try to make the enrollment process easy. What we think is really critical for y'all is to have this very first year with us coming in, we got a chance to reset the bar. So, we've got a chance to get everything right, rebuild the senses. We'll take all the paper and we'll convert it to an electronic format. And then, as we work through the first year, we'll start to put together a plan, once we get to understand Sandy and her team, we'll put together a plan to take you to really an electronic enrollment platform. Well, even if your team is inputting them, now, we'll do drops, ads, and terms out of my office. So, we have staff in my office that, that if Sandy can send new hires information, we'll input. Now, we'll go to, right now, we'll go to UMR's portal because they're the administrator, but we'll get them in. We'll take that off her plate immediately.
Are we doing that ourselves now, Sandy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so she wouldn't be doing that. That's, that's a service that we provide at no cost to you. It's part, one of, it's, it's part of our fee. But yes, boots on the ground, it's critical. We have to be there to talk to them. You have to be there to engage with them. You have to be there to let them know that there's somebody that will advocate for them. Commissioner, as you said, if, if it does, you can go in the wind a little bit. I give out my cell number, Klein gives out the cell number. Again, we're a family business. I'm sure you've had great representation. I mean, I get it. Living Waco, you're, you're rep currently with TAC, seems like a super nice guy, I've certainly heard great things about him. He lives in Waco.
That don't make him a good guy.
Should've, we should've driven him.
Close to Baylor.
Driven up here.
He should've even called his station. Then he'd be a good guy.
But, I mean, I'm an hour and twenty-five minutes away. I mean, I've been up here five times, six times since February. This is my, this is, this is what I do, Commissioner. I'm, I'm on the road all the time. So, we're not just gonna enroll it and see you later. We're involved, there's a lot of accountability.
You say vendors.
Yeah.
Who are you talking about?
Well, your vendors are anybody that you guys contract with, Commissioner. So, it would be UMR, RX Benefits, your pharmacy benefit manager, you know, your dental provider, your vision provider, those are our vendors. They're, you know, we, we like to call them vendor partners, but they're your partners. They're not my partners, they're your partners. Think of us as air traffic controllers. Our job is just to go find Hunt County the best of market for any service you need. It might be Cobra Administration Services, it might be online enrollment, it's my job and Klein's job to know who the best of market is. We make those introductions, we vet them for you, but ultimately, the contract is between Hunt and them. We do that to protect y'all. We're very clear, crystal clear of why we do it. We don't have to do it, that's the way we wanna do it. We want the relationship to be with y'all and we're there to help advocate for y'all. But we're not there to be their buddy. We're there to work for y'all. It's a professional relationship. We respect them, but we'll pitch them if we have to. We'll pitch them aside. We're going to go get the best of market. And that changes every couple of years. We keep finding there's new vendors out there.
A little different question than that. Are we going to be in a group by ourselves, or are we going to be in a larger group, or how's that look?
Good question. So we're going to roll this in, the plan the first year is to roll this into a captive. There's about 10,000 lives in it. So we're going to get some reductions in fixed costs because of that. But your claims, your claims are going to be based off of you. Your experience is going to be based off of y'all. I believe that we can roll out of the captive. That's the easy part. Reinsurance, we can change reinsurance every single year. It's seamless. It's behind the scenes. Your employees have no clue that's going on. It is truly an administrative process. It's an execution on the admin side. I'll change reinsurers every single year. If I can get one to come back in and offer us those fixed cost caps at less money, I'm doing it. Because it doesn't impact the employees. It impacts our financials.
But being in a bigger group, then that just helps us save money and have more negotiation, but doesn't, there's no negative to it. We don't have to pick up any of their problems or...
We get in, if we get into the end of the first year, we get nine months in, we get some credible data, we'll start to know how we're looking about five months in, six months in. I'd like to take you out and just go by getting a reinsurance contract for y'all, independent of even a captive. You're big enough. You're big enough to survive on your own. And I think that we can get you close to the same rate. I just like, I like my groups who are, who are controlling their plan and are doing all the right things necessary. Wellness programs, incentivize employees to go to the doctors, controlling our drug spend. I think that we can go out and I think we can always do better. You're plenty big enough to shop on your own. But we're going to, we're going to take a little more protection this year, and we're going to go in a larger group.
It sounds like you guys are going to handle a lot of this that Sandy and them are having to deal with now, but is there not anything else extra that we're going to have to do on our part to go to do this?
Yeah, that's a great question, too. So people ask me all the time, say, hey, we're going self-funded, it sounds complicated. How many people do we need to hire? I mean, you don't. It's simple. The process is, I told Sandy, it's about 20 minutes of work a week, probably for a group your size. I'm going to ask her to look at the census and look at the claims register. So instead of getting a bill, a statement every month, we get a claims register every week. We can do it every two weeks, but I like to do it every week. And it will come through, and with PHI access, that's Private Health Information Access, Sandy will look at these claims. There might be 10 claims, might be 20 claims, it's just on a per-week basis. And she's just going to make sure that she doesn't see anything that's out of line, like an employee name that she doesn't recognize. It's, we'll catch it. It will get caught at the administrator, but sometimes we can get out in front of a little bit. I don't want to release that money. And then she's going to process a check for claims. But they're going to go out on a weekly basis rather than a monthly basis. So to added work, no, sir.
Well, in actuality, why wouldn't she need somebody to do all that and send out a check?
You're sending one big check, Phillip. You're not sending a check. Get 20 checks out.
No, you're sending it to him, or you're sending it to the...
Yeah, it's just one check.
It's just one check.
Yeah, the third-party administrator is going to pay all your claims to all your providers. They're the ones writing all the thousands of checks every year to doctors and the physicians and the facilities. We're just writing one check.
Every week, or two weeks, or a month, or some cycle?
I've got groups that do it on a monthly basis. I've got groups that do it on a weekly. I like to start off on a weekly basis, just because the checks are smaller and there's a smaller list bill of claims to look at. But as far as adding anybody, I've got a group in Nebraska that has 2,800 belly buttons, you know, one person managing it. I mean, plenty of time. She has too much time for that. She keeps me busy. But it's not complicated. Again, somebody asked the question earlier, do your employees know the difference? Is it, it doesn't work any different. Again, I can promise you guys, you know, L3, your partner here in town, I mean, they're self-funded. I mean, I don't know how many employees they have at this particular location. I'm guessing probably 1,000 or more.
5,500?
5,500. There's 5,500 people walking around Greenville that have an insurance card, and they're self-funded. So, I mean, you know, there's nothing strange or nothing odd to any vendor in this area. You want to go to Dallas, you want to go to Houston, you want to go to Waco, it's everywhere. So it's not going to be anything that's going to be, doctors going to, the office is going to look at and think something's odd.
But as far as benefits, deductibles, and stuff like that, from the employee standpoint, they're not going to see them.
We set it up apples-to-apples exactly the way you have. Again, it's not a benefit-driven plan anyway, but your benefits are the same.
Well, in actuality, Commissioner...
Every time that we talk about insurance, employees start getting worried, is my deductible's going to go up.
Change.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear to everybody that their deductibles isn't necessarily going up, or it's going to cost them more a month, or something like that.
Well, the other thing is, we're already on a self-funded plan. TAC is a self-funded plan.
Sure.
The counties are just guaranteeing it, basically. And they're over-insuring. Instead of starting at a $125,000 claim, I think they started at a $1 million. Because they, how much is it?
I don't know the specific, but it's much lower than that.
Okay.
I believe it's $125,000.
$125,000?
Yeah, sorry, $125,000 in visual stop loss and a third-party stop loss as well.
Yeah, so we're already in one. It's just they're managing it and we're not.
Yeah, and the model you're set up on, it's a, it's a, it's a fully insured, you know, it's a self-funded plan on a fully insured chassis. Because you pay the premium, and it's gone. That's what we're trying to avoid. We're just trying to hang on.
Let's take a few-minute break. Y'all, can y'all, y'all still do it on time, or?
Yes, sir.
Let's take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back in. All right, let's see if we can get back up. All right, it's 2:55. We're back in session after a short break. Commissioners, are y'all getting any questions of George or Klein?
Have y'all put a paper and a pencil to see what kind of cost savings that the county would...
Yeah, so he asked what the cost savings would be. On the outset, right now, with the ancillary, we're right at about $100, $110,000. And that's guaranteed savings. It's guaranteed under what you're paying currently.
Is that on a yearly annual?
Yeah, that's annual. As I mentioned, Commissioner, first-year conservative actuarial underwriting. You know, I certainly can't guarantee it, but I would suspect that your spend will go down somewhere in the neighborhood of probably the first year, probably about 10%. So it'll be somewhere closer to probably $500,000.
Go down how much?
10%.
So the second year, we'll go down, we'll go down, the first year about $100,000, second year another $500,000. It's 10% of what we're paying currently, roughly.
How does it work every year with increases, percentages? You know, we're constantly battling a 5% to 8% to 10% increase.
Right.
How would it work in this case?
We'll see increases with these admin services, these fixed costs. You'll see them. But let's just take, for example, I mean, I don't see double digits ever. You know, we normally see them around 4% to 5%, 3%. A lot of times they're flat. But if we see an increase, it's usually pretty nominal. But again, the increase isn't on the claim spend. The increase is just on the fixed cost. So if we're going to get a 4% increase, I'd rather get a 4% increase on $250 per employee than $1,100 per employee, right? So we're only seeing the increase on the fixed cost. The claims we can control, right? Can't control the occurrence of them, we can control the spend on them.
And I guess the reinsurance and all that would go, could go up a little bit, is...
Well, it can, it can go down, too.
Okay.
It can go down. Because what's going to happen is, you guys are going to become what's called credible, and we're going to have your data, and you're going to live and die, breathe. Eventually, you're going to stand on your own two feet. We're going to take your data, and we're going to pay based off our experience. And we're willing to do that. We think, you've got plenty in your risk pool to do that.
You made the statement you can control claims.
You made the statement y'all can control claims, Hal?
Claims, what we pay for them. What we pay for medical care. We can control over time what we pay. We can choose what we want to pay for healthcare. Direct conduct.
Not a direct claim, but total claims, Phillip.
Yeah, I can't, I can't control the occurrence of claims. Nobody can. But we can control what we pay at the point of service. We talked about the 24/7 clinic out on the highway that's charging us 700, you know, 18, well, $1,700, $1,800 an hour. We just don't have to use them, right? We've got one over here on the other side of town that charges $200 an hour. We'll use them. That will become our provider for those types of services. Those are the types of things we can control.
But also controlling it means, speaking of employees, too.
Correct.
Them educating.
Educating them, yes, sir.
You can educate them. You can take that horse to the water trough, but you can't make him drink. That's what we've had problem all this time. So you, really, you can't control that. Education and actuality, that's, that's not your fault that they don't want to come. That's not anybody's fault, but that's people. So...
Well, I think, Phillip, I disagree with you, Phillip. I think if we hired another person for Sandy's office that had full-time responsibility to continuously educate our people and really stay on top of it all the time, I think we'd see a difference. Because I think a lot of it is, we tell them maybe one time, and then it's the last time we talk to them. But if we hear or know that they're going to the emergency room, we can educate them. And we can educate every group. I mean, that, my vision is, and Sandy and I have talked about it, and I think I've talked to y'all before, I think we, no matter which group we go with, whether it's TAC or go with this group, it's, we'd still benefit in premiums long-term if we had that person. Because our claims would go down, which should drive our rate down, no matter what. I think it'd pay for, we'd save that money on the employee through rates.
I think we could, we could come up with an ROI on that as well. You could, it's calculable. What a dedicated employee would do on your return. And again, the education factor and helping get employees to the right places. I mean, it could have a huge impact. Again, all we've got to do is prevent one $400,000 claim. That's a game changer. It's not that hard to do.
Is there a particular incentive structure you see your clients employing to make horses drink?
Commissioner, okay, no, not a particular, because every group is different for what Commissioner Hutchins just said. It's, I mean, Commissioner Martin just said, every group has a different genetic makeup. But we have learned that, you know, you've got a carrot, you know, tied to a stick. The carrot is a lot better than the stick. They react to the carrot better than they do the stick. So we found that by doing things for them that aren't just charging them more, maybe, you know, incentivizing them to do days off, paid days off, things that would be budgetable for the county as well. You know, we've got groups that give out, you know, you participate in the wellness program, we'll give you an apple watch. Yeah, it's great for the 13% of the people that will actually care and actually want to do it. So every plan is different, Commissioner. Everybody's employees, and that's something... Everybody's employees, and that's something that we'll learn, with Sandy's team will train us on, you know, this is where we have the spots. But your data, again, one of the most important aspects of, of anybody's health plan is the data. And, and you've got to know what's in your group. You've got to know what the tendencies are. Where is the spend going? Are they going to the ER? Are high-risk maternities our problem? Why? Is cancer, let's talk about that, why? I mean, do we have a partnership with a, with a cancer and oncology center? I mean, maybe we should until we get this under control. Is it high blood pressure? I bet it is. Is it high cholesterol? Sure. Is it body mass index? Yes. Those are all things that we can look at and we can control. We can start to control, we can start to get our hands around it. But every group, Commissioner, it's a great question though. But every group has an option, has opportunities to be incented to improve. And they're not really big, big money, you know, dishouts, they're not big payouts. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do that are very cost-effective, but again, we're going to look at the ROI. The data, that's what we're going to get our hands on. You have data, we just spend a tremendous amount of time studying it.
I did our $25 incentive go for the wellness. And last year we had... We've probably got a few more.
30% is not a bad starting point at all, by the way, that's pretty impressive. So, one thing that we have, Commissioner, another thing, is that, to answer your question, we look at groups and we look at your turnover, that's usually another calculable number. So how long does it take? To refresh, so, again, tying you back in, people say they can't be trained. I bet we can. And the best time to train them is when they onboard. And when we get them to understand our program and what we're trying to do at Hunt County, if you have 10% turnover, it's going to take you roughly 10 years to flush out and have a brand-new group. I can promise you that generationally, when you start getting 20% and 30% and 40% and 50% buy-in, the others will come fast. Everybody wants to comply. When they see their rates going down, I want it to come in here like everybody does and see a family rate that went down 700 bucks. We can do that, we can get there as a group, we can get there over time, and we can offer more affordable dependents, but we've got to start now. We're not going to do it taking 5 and 10 and 15% increases every single year. It won't work. It just won't work. But we can get control of it. As we train, like, that's what we're doing, as we train the new employees to come in, this is the way we're doing business here, is it, again, it's viable, our health plan's really important to us. We've got a better chance. But eventually they're all going to turn over, and then we'll see how good of a job we did.
All right, Commissioners, anything else? George and Klein, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, you want to go into executive session and discuss it, or?
Yes, sir.
All right, I entertain the motion to go into executive session.
Shall we move?
In motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Do we have to specify an item?
I don't think so for this. It's on our agenda.
You're right.
We're going to discuss the insurance.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Good question, though. All right, so we're going to executive session, 3:05. If, we're going to come out and vote on a health care is the plan, so, if both of y'all will step outside, then we'll, we'll be back out and come and get you in a minute.
We're back up.
Okay. It's 3:43. It's been a long day. We're back in regular session discussing action item number four, which is presentation from NITC group and we're going to be discussing renewal plan with TAC or the change into the NITC group for insurance. George, we got one question. If we go with you, your plans start, you'll have us up and running October 1st.
Yes, sir.
And currently we have to have enrollment done before September 1st because we got to pay inter-risters for if we went with TAC since we're not, if we chose you and we didn't do that, we would only have to budget $250 or would we not even pay y'all till November 1st?
We wouldn't have a billing cycle till October.
October 1st or middle?
It would be October 15th most likely.
So, but the only thing we'd get a bill for is $250 times the employees.
Correct.
What about dental and vision?
Well, that would be separate obviously.
But it'll be bills when?
It would be billed at the end of every month.
End of every, so it'd be billed November for October. So for budget purposes, we wouldn't have to put it in there. Did that answer the question, Mark? Does that make it, Sandy, is that?
Yeah, open enrollment, if you want to, you know, open enrollment to see a month of September.
Open enrollment, August.
You could change that because, I mean, if you wanted to go a month out, you would have a bill. We can do it in August, but if you wanted to change your open enrollment period to butt up to the effective date, you could.
But what are y'all going to do and what's she going to have to do?
Open enrollment, well, we would schedule open enrollment meetings that would be face-to-face meetings with employees.
And you'd have your people here doing all that? Okay.
I got a question, Judge. Who pays y'all for this? Do we pay y'all?
Yes, sir.
So is the insurance company not paying you?
We don't have any contract with the insurance company. Keeps it out of it, the employees don't get stuck with paying us sometimes.
Do we have enough?
But you're part of the 250 a month, right?
No, fixed costs. We're separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how do y'all get paid then?
We just pay us, will y'all pay us on a monthly basis or you can pay us on a quarterly basis?
So is that included in these rate though?
No.
So what is that rate?
That's $40,000 a year.
$40,000 a year?
Yep.
And it's paid monthly?
You can, however you want to pay it.
Right.
You can pay it on a quarterly basis.
So the $100,000 or so you said we'd save in dental and vision really is 60 basically? Because we currently don't pay a fee to TAC, I don't think, do we?
No.
No?
We're not. Yeah, I mean, no, I don't know how to set up a TAC.
Right.
But any, any, any.
We just want to understand all the costs. So y'all cost is $40,000 a year?
Yeah, your cost is presented on the dental and vision.
Okay.
And then we just charge a separate fee.
Okay. So the dental and all, we got that and we're saving about $100,000 there. Y'all separate fee is 40 and we're paying 250 a month for anything else?
Fixed costs.
Our fixed costs.
Yeah. We're going to budget, we're going to budget the difference one way.
Right. All right. Everybody clear on that now? Any other questions? Well, I entertain a motion for approval of one of the groups.
I'll make a motion to approve NITC group for Hunt County Insurance.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I do want to make one comment real quick, Judge. I do want to let the citizens know though that changing this plan that is not infecting them in any sort of.
Our employees?
Our employees.
Right.
Employees in any way, the benefits are going to stay the same, the deductibles, everything is staying the same. Only thing they will see different is a different insurance card.
Correct. All right. So it was unanimous vote?
No, sir. We can help y'all drive those.
I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay. So Randy voted no, the rest of us voted aye. All right. Thank you, Jonathan. And I guess we'll get with y'all soon.
Yes, sir.
Like tomorrow.
Five minutes.
Yeah, all right, commissioners, is anything else before the court today?
Yes. Do we need to advise him if we can send him a letter in reference to this changeover?
To Jonathan, to TAC? Well, just note Sandy can send him an email and just say that we're not renewing. Yeah.
So I'll talk to my management, I'll reach out to see if he can tomorrow and let her do it.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Anything else? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, right eagle. We're adjourned at 3:48.